Good evening, everybody. This is the meeting of the Needham Zoning Board of Appeals for October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We're here today on Zoom because the cameras and other work at the town are still under construction, and we hope to return in person for November, so fingers crossed. But at this particular point, as we've done periodically for the last two or so years, in the event our cable, our internet network or Zoom fails, we'll resume the meeting in November. And but at this point, we have not had that happen to us, and we'll continue with the meeting on Zoom. At this point, the board is Nick and Peter, and we would like to entertain a motion for the minutes from our last meeting on September twenty-first.
I'll go ahead and put a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. The minutes are deemed approved. Next on our agenda is a application of Jeremy and Jessica Collin at thirty Wilshire Park, and they've applied for a special permit under section one point four point six for a an enlargement of a pre-existing non-conforming single family. The applicant has submitted a request to continue the hearing and a desire to perhaps consult with counsel on the issue of special permits and variances. So there is a motion to continue. Is there can I have that motion to accept the request for continuance until November?
I'll put a motion on the table to accept the applicant's continuance or desired continuance till November for thirty Wilshire Park.
Second it with the understanding that I I think one continuance should be sufficient because this is going nowhere, they're gonna have to start over again.
Okay, so let that note that for the record, we'll agree to with a continuance until November. And if it comes up again, just for the special permit, without the variance or whatever they have to do, whatever they want to do, modify their plans, have counsel, we probably will not. Well, we'll we'll take it up at that point. So there's the motion. There's a second all in favor to allow the continuance. Say aye.
Aye.
So it is continued. And what is our November meeting, Daphne?
The November meeting is November sixteenth.
So it will be extended to eleven sixteen, and let's put that on at seven thirty P M. Next on the agenda is not able to be started until seven forty-five. So we have about eight or nine minutes before that, and that's the application of twenty-four Webster Street. So we have a couple of other administrative things we can talk about. The first is a a suggestion that we amend our rules on continuances or withdrawals, withdrawals without prejudice. Now, Daphne sent out a memo under my name dated October second explaining our current rules on withdrawal and when it can be submitted without a vote, without prejudice, or when it can be, it requires a board to make that finding. And this arose, if you recall, last hearing where there was a motion to withdraw without prejudice, and the planning board had some issues with that. So we looked at the rules. I consulted with town council because there was sort of a nonconformity with the the general laws, and this amendment seeks to bring that into conformity. And the focus really is, under our rules, it's any time before the public hearing. And under the general laws, it's before the publication of the public hearing. So the rules, the motion is to amend the rules in Article five, section two, to require a applicant to notify the board on a withdrawal without prejudice, which would be granted before the notice published public hearing. And that is really the change. Anybody have any questions or discussions? Want to continue this until November to look at the general laws? Anybody have an issue with that? So at that point, I entertain a motion to amend our rules of Article five, section two withdrawal and replace it in its entirety with the new paragraph prepared by Daphne that is before you that would require prior to the publication of notice of a hearing, an application may be withdrawn without prejudice. And thereafter can be only withdrawn without prejudice on the consent of the board. Is there a motion? And is there a second?
All right, I'll I'll move to amend the Z B A bylaws as set forth in the October two, two thousand point three memo.
I'll second that motion.
The only correction, it's the Z B A rules, not the Z B A bylaws. So would that be a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
All right. So we have a motion. We have second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This item has to be continued at the next meeting. It's the amendments on Article seven of our rules say that rules may be amended by a majority, which you have done tonight, provided that such amendment will be presented in writing, which was done, and the action taken thereof at a subsequent regular meeting. So we'll have this will be like continued. It will be on the agenda.
So for the record, let's withdraw the motion, the second the vote, and put this on the agenda for the November. What's the date again? Twenty the sixteen?
Nineteenth, the nineteen.
November nineteenth.
November sixteenth.
November sixteenth. Daphne, you said the sixth. All right.
Oh, the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Today is the nineteenth. Today is the nineteenth. Next month, it's the sixteenth.
So we cannot do the rules. That's too bad. All right. Do you want to amend the rules to abolish that that deferment rule? But well, we don't have the written request, do we?
So you do have the written request.
No, I want to amend section seven's rule.
Oh.
You're slowing down the process of the zoning board. We have another issue to discuss, and we can do that with Howard here. I think it was I've talked to both Peter and Nick, and I've also talked to Lee Newman, and I submitted to you and circulated everything that Lee had proposed on a sort of substantial tweak of our decision writing process. So for the record, it would basically have the planning staff take the responsibility of drafting our initial decisions. So and it goes into detail, and everybody's read my questions, my comments, Lee's comments and response, and I had a very nice conversation with her earlier in the week. So personally, it's something that I would like to see and test. Obviously, we've had a problem, and we didn't have bandwidth. We didn't have staff time. There's a new position. Daphne's time has expanded. Lee explained that she has bandwidth to do this. So I'd like to see how we should maybe test it out. So a couple of things on that. Personally, I was going to suggest several changes on our decision writing process anyway. The first was I was not going to have Daphne write facts and send it to me as the chair for review prior to circulate. I didn't think that was necessary. I thought it was adequate for the person who's drafting the decision to get the facts and the decision at the same time and write it that way. So I was gonna change that. There's been some reluctance on both the planning department and some of the select people on having applicants write decisions, and I think we've had some discussion on that. And I sort of think we reached a consensus that only certain attorneys, not pro se applicants, and we would ask to write a first draft, and it wouldn't be going back. This sort of solves that issue, and that we didn't really have staff time to provide the same services they do for the planning board and that they do for the conservation commission. So personally, as your new chair, I think it'd be a really good thing to test out and see how it works and the timing. The thirty day timeframe, we can try to work on it. It's not etched in stone in my blood. It's not something that is so critical. The twenty-four or forty-eight hour proposal that was proposed, that just doesn't work for me at all, and that's sort of we've had that discussion. So I think that we want to do it efficiently. We want to do it promptly. And I think what would be a good test is is, you know, I want to hear both of you. I haven't talked to Howard about this at all, and I got his feelings on how you see that. So I'll open up to Peter and Nick, and then Howard would like to hear you. And what we're talking about is a proposal by Lee Newman in the planning department to start drafting decisions for the board. So, Peter, thoughts?
Well, I you know, given my understanding was although nominally the planning department takes that over, it would be Daphne that would actually be doing it. And and I have confidence in Daphne's ability to do it. So so long as that's the the factual way that it works, I think it's worth a try. I would not want this to go into the kind of planning department in general mill, because as I think you pointed out, there have been times where the Z B A and the planning department don't see a hundred percent eye to eye on on certain matters. But I think during Daphne's tenure, I will certainly think that it's a good idea to try. I also agree with you in terms of the timing. I mean, we'll do the best that we can on the time. You know, the forty-eight hour rule, I didn't make a lot of sense. I also agree with you that there's no reason for you to pre-review the facts. And the member who is charged with creating the decision can also verify the facts against the you know, the video. So I'm in favor.
I'm in a favor as well. I think that, you know, obviously, we're all volunteers and we're stepping up. So any assistance that we can get, you know, there's obviously going to be at least one second set of eyes, and I think the there's still going to be an appointed member to review, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So there'll be kind of a captain and then the ability to circulate as well. So I think it just expedite things because I can tell you I was guilty of being slow to draft in the past myself. Obviously, I think we're a little unique where we do the drafting as opposed to other municipalities. So if we can have some assistance from the staff, and especially Daphne, she's here all the time, she's got it. And I think it's a great starting point with us to kind of belt and suspenders it.
Howard?
Good evening, and I apologize. I was went to the building office, and I realized that the building was closed. Didn't have my laptop. I had to go back to my office to get on the Zoom, so I apologize for being late. So the discussion is whether we get assistance from Daphne and others to draft the initial decision?
Correct. It was you saw I sent you Lee Newman's proposal, sent you my response and questions and her response, and I've had a conversation with her at all. The the one thing that I just before you you pop in and talk about it is Peter's thing is the separation. Lee was pretty clear that it's our staff person, although she is a planning employee. So the bottom line is the planning board will have their own review. They'll have their own comment. That's separate. But Daphne, as long as she's working for the town and assigned to us, she's the person doing it. So we may still have disagreements, and I talked to Lee about several of those disagreements, and she was pretty sincere. She also agreed if she wanted, if you wanted, and didn't want to make a decision on this so quickly, as to come to our next meeting and sort of have a dialogue about it. But anyway, Howard, I cut you off.
You know, I saw I think it's great if we all respect the good work that Daphne does, and she has experience. So she will draft this decision, and the board reviews it. Is that ultimately the proposal?
It will be she'll draft the decision with the facts and send it to an assigned person who's going to be the draft person. So the 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 author that you 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 will she's drafting it, you're me, whoever is going to review it, edit it, and we'll go through the same process then. Is if there's substantial substantive edits, it has to come to the next meeting.
All right. This all this all takes place after the the public hearing.
Yes.
Got a chance to deliberate and think about it and vote it. Okay, yeah, yeah, sure. Of course, that makes great sense. I'm in favor of that. Yes.
So we'll do this. Sorry, Daphne. Go ahead.
I you know, I maybe it wasn't clear. I will draft the fact section, the the facts, the findings and decision, I will do those all in draft form. And then I will send them to the assigned member writer or, you know, main, you know, the assigned member.
Lee Lee gave us a phrase. I don't know what she called it. There was a title for it.
The title was given. It was
Decision principle.
Decision principle.
Yes.
So the decision principle will be sort of like the person who's really going to watch it, be my second eyes. You know, and I think that, you know, this is the way that most professional planning staff does. And I heard some question about that there's other planning staff. I am the planning staff assigned to the Z B A. There is nobody else, and nobody else to be assigned.
The the comment would be is if you're not here, then there is a a concern that the it gets brought into the planning board department. We want to keep our separation. That's sort of that's it. So while you're here, you're not retiring, you're not traveling, whatever, you know, you know, obviously, you have your life. But anyway, so that
I do have.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 how I would like to see it is let's do a test. We can even start tonight if we reach a decision, write the decision. There's no parts, write the decision. I'm gonna be the first decision principal.
You'll be the decision principal, okay?
Because I'll be the first decision principal. I'll work with you, edit it, and if there's any substantive issues, you or me will decide and send it, bring it to the board. And then the board will have a deliberation, and then you'll circulate it. And then and if anybody has any substantive issues, then you bring it to the board. It's not if I have substantive issues, right? Then bring it back to the board. We'll have it at the hearing. And and for signatures, I talked to Lee about this as well, execution. If you don't get a lot of comments, bring it to the meeting. We're gonna sign him in the meeting.
And we sign them there. So there will be efficiencies to this whole process.
If by chance, we decide there's going to be some edits at the hearing, then she'll redraft it, and then we can go to town hall and sign it. We're not going to bicycle decisions anymore around town to our homes. Stick him in Peter's front door, get attacked by Howard's dogs.
That's a scary dog, Peter. I mean, Howard and Peter, very scary dogs.
So does that sound like a good plan?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, the one thing that is very reassuring is that we have, you know, you guys are all really heavyweights, and I've seen all of you writing. And, you know, I feel like you guys are going to be great eyes and can watch over me and give great direction, and we have an incredible library of decisions. And the quality that has always come out of this, you know, that's really, we're still going to aim at that.
And we're looking for an A minus on your first shot. Like maybe a typo. We'll give you three typos and it's bang it out and send it out. Any event. We're now at seven forty-nine. So I think it's appropriate to bring in our next applicant, which was supposed to be at seven forty-five. But that was a very productive hearing, and you'll tell Lee, we we don't need her to come visit in November. We're gonna proceed with this.
You're gonna be very busy in November.
Oh, boy. Oh, good. Speaking of which, I'm probably not going to be here on November sixteenth, but we can save that to the end, Mr. Chair.
There is one issue, just to be aware, and if we have to do it a Zoom hearing, there will be, I think, an application that I have a a conflict on. So we need three people to hear that. So if we have to go to Zoom to allow that November sixteenth application, I don't know if it's going to come up before it. It probably is. Is there any way you can participate by Zoom if we have to?
Let me check my flight. Give me one second, and I'll tell you.
That's not a good thing, flights.
It's a great thing.
Airports.
When is the deadline? What?
The deadline is Monday at five, so I will know on Tuesday. I can email everybody with what the list is. So just in case, you know, we have a good sense.
So there's that one, but there's always the possibility of any one of these applications can present a conflict. And since we're down a member until appointed by the board of select, the select board, we have an issue that we really can't lose one or two people. My question was, when's the deadline to pick another night? November fifteenth, November fourteenth, November twenty-second. I mean, Nick's going for Thanksgiving, I assume.
No, no, I just have a thing in the West Coast. I I can do it by Zoom on the sixteenth. I'm I'll I have a morning flight. I'll be I'll be wheels down by two P M Eastern time, so.
And and in that case, then I can, if if it comes up and I'm in the green room, I just sit in the green room, and then Nick does it, and you'll wake me up from my siesta and bring me back, and Nick can go back to Los Angeles, whatever he's doing. Does that work, Daphne?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be fine.
Okay. So it could be a hybrid. So we would have to use the owl technology if
No, the owl technology may be over in November, and you guys will all be mic'd, and it will be a really quality hybrid meeting like the one the select board has.
Okay.
You know, that is what Mark at Cable told me today. Unfortunately, one of the cameras that they installed, new cameras, one of them is it was had a default to it. So that might be a little wrinkle, but he thinks that by November, we should be good.
And by November, we could have a new board member as well. So we may be free of that. So we'll we'll make some decisions. Know about Monday. Let's get the whole list of who filed. That that's something I would like you to do is send out the applicants early once that application period has come in, because we all practice law and have clients, and there's conflicts. And just want to make sure so we are never short and have to postpone a meeting. Okay? So Monday night.
On Tuesday morning.
Sounds good. All right. So let's move on to our hearing, invite the applicant at two forty, twenty-four Webster Street to join.
Med, you can please turn on your visuals, please.
Good evening. Sorry for the delay. This is an application of Med. How do you pronounce your last name?
Gasolari.
Gasolari at twenty-four Webster Street. And he has applied for a special permit under section one point four six and other applicable sections of the bylaw to alter, enlarge, and extend a pre-existing non-conforming single family to allow an expansion and addition of the second story to accommodate two bedrooms and a bathroom on the second floor. And again, the property is at twenty-four Webster Street, and it's the single residence S R B district. Good evening.
Good evening.
So what I would like you to do is present your application, tell us your plans. But also, you want to establish the pre-existing nonconformity that you're looking to expand. And just for the record, to point you to, you apply supplied some building cards showing dates of the construction of the home and some other sources of information. So, thank you.
So hi, everybody. Thank you for for trying to help us with this project. And we moved here in two thousand seventeen, and you know, we have three kids, five five members. We only have two bedrooms now. And, you know, after six years, we decided this is kind of the best neighborhood to stay and raise our families. So it's time for for us to build a couple, two more bedrooms upstairs for the kids. So the this house was built in nineteen twenty-eight. And and there was an addition in nineteen sixty-six. We are going upward to add the second floor. We're not going any sideways, front or back or sideways. We're just going upwards. You know, we're not gonna, we're just gonna double the space. The first floor, we're just gonna go upstairs. That's all we're gonna do. Not sure if you if you have any specific questions or if you want me to show you any documents.
Yeah, I just noticed one thing that I saw two dates of construction in your documentation. Let me see if I can pull out the original. Where is the building card? You have the building cards in front of you, anybody?
I do. Year bill eighteen twenty-eight.
Okay, and then there's a second card, I believe.
And then on the page next to the picture, it says nineteen thirty-four.
Yeah, so that was the I just didn't see why there was a difference there. And and I noticed that.
It was also, I think that might be a mistake, John, because it was also assessed in thirty-two, it looks like, so. On the third page.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? I don't know when the zone changed in that particular district. But it's either twenty-eight on the building card, and then there's another one that says thirty-four in tenth. Where's the thirty-eight one?
No, thirty-two on the third page in the assessor's record. Value factors. It looks like a deed was recorded in thirty-two.
Yeah. Package that was distributed hard copy. I don't seem to have the assessing records.
No, this was
Email.
Send an email.
Yeah, no, Nick, that's just the chain of ownership.
Yeah, I just
Yeah.
I'm saying that likely sold lightly traded in thirty-two is all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that that is just the recorded owners. That list.
I suspect the house existed in twenty-eight is my logical
Yes.
assumption.
Peter, anything? Howard?
I'm sorry, I have to find now. I was just looking at the hard copy pack, and now I'm looking at the email.
No, I you mean in terms of pre-existing nonconforming?
Correct.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I don't think that there's any issue, and I mean, by virtue of the tenure statute. I think even if there is a nonconformity, I think it's
So for the
Good to go.
Particular findings, twenty-eight, looks good.
Yeah, and and sixty-six, if you want to use that, which is it looks like when the one-story addition was put in there.
Right. Okay. I just want to read into the record a couple of the comments. The police chief indicated that it's a heavily trafficked road and having construction vehicles impeding traffic can can create a road hazard. So he's asking when you, if if we approve your permit, you pull a building permit to make sure that construction vehicles do not impede traffic. Understand that?
Yes, we can do that.
And fire department had no comments. The board of health has submitted the pest control during demolition and ongoing pest control that the building inspector will require as well, the building department. But perhaps Daphne can share that link that the health department has provided us. The building inspector didn't make a finding on the date. But had no comments or objections, that that was the town engineer, excuse me, had no comments or objections to the application as presented. I don't know, Daphne, if I saw something from the planning board.
Yes, the planning board had no comment.
And how about the building inspector?
The building inspector, the reason why you did not get a comment from him earlier is that he wanted to have the exact distance for the encroachment in the setback. That would be where the balcony was, and so he unfortunately, the surveyor never provided that information. He did provide law, you know, the the window proportions, but he didn't give the measurement. So So, um, Joe Prondak was waiting for, for that, but nevertheless, he had no objection to this proposal. Because the addition will not, will follow the non-conformity, will not extend beyond the non-conformity.
Okay.
And there was an email that he sent on October seventeenth that he said, uh. We're waiting for the fir- surveyor to clarify the exact dimensions of this non-conformity. But based on this knowledge, the building department has no objections to this proposal.
So has the surveyor been asked to, uh, update the plot plan?
Uh, I know that Joe Prondak has asked the surveyor to provide that information and I'm hoping that Med has. Uh, pursued that, but we would like to have that on the record.
And just to be clear, John, I think, Mr. Chair, uh, it's a bay window. So I think. The building inspector's comment was that there's a bay window. That he doesn't have an exact dimension from the bay window to the line. And the bay windows obviously further encroaching than the nine point eight that's delineated on the surveyor's point there.
Got it.
And actually I had a, a question about that, just looking at the, the existing and the proposed elevation. For the applicant. Are you getting rid of that bay window on the first floor?
No.
Okay, so you're just going to continue that same bay of another story?
Yes.
Have you spoken to your surveyor?
Yes, I did. And, um, he, he, uh. I literally sent him what the, um, you guys sent me and, um, he provided another survey. Um, that has some window measurement, the bay window measurement, but it doesn't have. The, um. The measurement you're looking for. He provided that the, um. The measurements tend to not, as opposed to the first survey nine eight. From. You know, from the wall to the. To the neighbor's. Property. Uh, I can share it here if you want. I think. Uh, I submitted it. No, I can share it on my screen if you wish.
No, I, I've seen that survey. Uh, it shows, it's dated, uh, the sixteenth. Of October and it shows ten point two.
Yes. And he provided different measurement of the bay window instead of. You know. How far is it from the neighbor? He, he provided a different measurement.
Yeah, my guess is he has to fix that. Um. Has everybody seen that revised plot plan? It was in the package. Any concerns on? Waiting for that. Correct. Plot plan or obviously the building commissioner will be looking for that.
I don't have a concern with that, John.
No, I'm fine with it. So the, the, the plot plan dated July twenty-three is showing a nine point eight. Uh, to the property line and that there's clarity here that the. Uh, construction of the second floor will go up. And maintain that nine point eight separation from the right side property. Is that correct?
No, there's.
No, there's a bay window.
In the email. We, there's two separate things. We have an updated plot plan. That changes the nine point eight to ten point two that came in via an email. And additionally, the building inspector wanted to know what the exact measurement is from the bay window, which is obviously going to be less than the ten point two.
Okay, I get the email. Okay, okay, ten two is, it was ninety, now it's ten two. So you, you're moving it over more. How did that change?
I think it was just a mistake.
They, they went back to the old block plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they, they took the ten point two off the old block plan.
Of the nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah.
So.
But the July twenty-three says ninety. Okay, but this is updated, this is ten two. That's great. Further away from the lot line. That's good. And so, sure, I, I, I would like to get the updated, uh, plot plan, but would be willing to vote on it, subject to that, uh, uh. Plan being submitted.
Okay. Um. And I, I did find, uh, his email from the seventeenth. And he said the existing foundation of the main house was ten point one. Um, where did that number come from? Ninety, ten-one, ten-two and a missing bay. Um. So many.
Yeah, I think, I think it's kind of irrelevant at the end of the day, right? I think it is. Surveying is a, is an art, not a science, is what I've learned. Professional practice.
At, at that, I, I think I'll, uh, ask anyone in the public. Is anyone in the public on the green room waiting to be heard on this application, Daphne?
Uh, Steve. I do not see any hands raised.
So I'll repeat for anyone here online who. Has. Either a position for or against the application or just commentary. Um, please, uh, raise your hand and Daphne will recognize you. If there is none, then we'll move to close the hearing. No one, Daphne?
There is none.
Well, so let's close the public hearing and, uh, we can deliberate on this application. Um. Peter.
I. Have no issue with the application. Looks like a nice project. I can certainly understand why you want to expand and. Again, I think it's clearly understood by the applicant that they cannot go any closer to the side lot line than the existing. Structure, including the bay window. And as long as everyone is clear about that, I don't see there's any issue with it. So I would support it.
Howard?
Uh, I, I agree with, with what's been said. It's, it's a fine project. It's not encroaching further on the non-conformity. So I, I, I'm, uh, in favor of it.
Yep.
I have no issue. I think that. You know, there's, even though we have an encroachment issue on the right side. There's a, there's not a single family dwelling to the right of it anyways. There's a driveway in the land, so. I'm in totally in favor of the applicant and I. Would support his application.
Okay, so on this panel to vote, uh, Howard, you came in a little late, so it's Peter and Nick. So, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion, uh, to approve the application with any conditions that you think should be imposed. Or required.
I'll put a motion on the table to approve the applicant's. Application, uh, for a special permit under section one point four six. To further expand the non-conformity by adding a complete second floor additions of the property. With the carve-out that no construction vehicles shall be on the street as per the chief of police's request. Um, and the final plot plan with all dimensions shall be received by the building department before a building company is issued.
And there can be no further encroachments into the side yard.
No further encroachments into the side yard than what is pre-existing.
Right. Uh, Peter, anything to add to that motion?
Nope, I would second it.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have been seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations. Uh, please get us, please get us that, that updated plot plan as soon as you can. We have to write a decision and we generally will have that decision signed hopefully at our next meeting on November sixteenth. Uh, try to, try to get that to us before then, well before that.
I will.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Daphne, for the help. Thank you so much.
All right, good night.
Night.
Does anybody else have anything discussed this evening? Anything else pending before us? Um. Seeing nothing, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, how about, John, the withdrawal of the board amendment? Administrator?
We, we've already done that, um. And Daphne read us Rule Seven that says. We, we actually voted to approve it, uh, unanimous, and she said we can't, we have to defer that to the next meeting. So we withdrew our motion acceptance and vote. And then I wanted to, uh, amend seven to eliminate that rule, but, uh, I can't do that because it's not in writing. So it's up for a discussion and a vote in November, Howard.
Excellent.
And the other mo- the app, other application, uh, we would, they withdrew, uh, continued into November.
I thought they had a little problem with the, uh. With the setback, yes.
Did anybody want to discuss special permits, variances? You saw legal opinions, planning board opinions. Building inspector opinions, um, and, and the case law. Um, I think even Peter's, you pulled a case, uh, and you were cited in this sort of. A departmental discussion. Any thoughts on that? Um.
No, I mean, frankly, I, I think the, uh, excerpt from the M C L E zoning manual is something to really keep in mind for this, though, because of. Right now it's current. It breaks down the, the cases into three categories and it clearly states the type of relief that each needs. So sometimes we get a little muddled and I think this would be kind of a good touchstone. To be true.
So might you copy that blurb from the zoning manual? Is that, is that what circulated? It was, okay. Cause I didn't buy the update.
But my, mine is twenty-one, but, uh. It, I think it's, I think it's still current based on Chris Eats, uh.
I still get the bills from M C L E. It just, you know, they just come just forward. I, I don't, I don't get it. Someone steals it. So I, I'd say I didn't buy it, but, uh, I paid for it. Um, all right. So there's a motion to adjourn. Do we have one?
No move.
Second?
Aye.
We'll see in November.
Bye, guys. Take care.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
All right. Happy Halloween, everybody.
Yeah.
Take care.
Bye-bye.